Well, it's the top of the hour. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining today's OpenVX Town Hall. We have an exciting lineup for you today, featuring an overview of use cases and recent updates to OpenVX, as well as OpenVX for automotive and framing the future of OpenVX 2.0. Our speakers today include Cronos Group President Neil Trevette, OpenVX Working Group Chair Kriti Nagashgara, and Rafael Cano from Bosch. But first, a couple of housekeeping items. If you have any questions during the presentation, please ask using the Q&amp;A feature located on your Zoom toolbar at the bottom of your screen. We are recording this webinar and we'll share the link to the recording along with the slides on the event's webpage. With that, I'll hand it off to Neil Trevette, President of the Cronos Group. Neil?
Welcome, everyone. It's good to have you here. I'm going to give a brief introduction to Cronos, in case you haven't come across us before, who we are and what we do, and set the context for OpenVX and how it relates to the other Cronos open standards before handing over to Kriti and Rafael for a deeper dive into OpenVX itself. So Cronos is an international nonprofit standards consortium that is open to any organization to join, and all of our standards are available royalty-free for the industry to use. Our focus is on enabling applications and libraries to access the power of acceleration hardware for 3D graphics, spatial envision processing, and parallel computation. We've been in operation for 25 years now, and we have close to 160 members from all around the world. And we're going to be talking a lot about open standards and open source today, so it's maybe helpful to define those terms as they are quite different, but they are often interrelated and confused with each other. Open standards are defined by a specification, together with rigorous performance tests, that define precise communication, for example, between hardware and software through an API. This enables reliable implementations to be built and shipped by multiple companies to meet the needs of diverse markets, price points, use cases, and enables that technology to be used pervasively across the industry. Open standards are often used for hardware APIs as they enable healthy competition between different hardware implementations. By contrast, open source projects enable multiple contributors to cooperate and share the work in building a single shared implementation. Open source is often used to implement software libraries and languages where there is no real competitive advantage to competing with multiple implementations, and a consistent and open implementation is the best way to enable the industry. Open source and open standards are both powerful and complementary tools. And in fact, open source projects for tooling and sampling implementations are often used to enable open standard ecosystems. In fact, Cronos makes broad use of open source to support our open standards. So here is the family of Cronos open standards currently in active development. There are 3D acceleration APIs, including Vulcan and a newly announced lang shading language. There are 3D asset formats, including GLTF for efficiently transmitting 3D scenes, and KTX for GPU textures. There is OpenXR for portable augmented and virtual reality, and the soon-to-be-released new Camros embedded camera API. There's also a family of APIs and languages for parallel computation to accelerate applications such as machine learning and vision, which includes OpenVX, which is where we're going to be focusing today. So again, before we get into the details of OpenVX, how do all these different standards from Cronos interrelate? So Cronos provides a diversity of APIs that are suited for different markets and developer needs. The APIs on the bottom row of this slide provide low-level explicit control over accelerator hardware. Vulcan is used for programming GPUs. OpenCL enables software to use any mix of available heterogeneous processors. Both OpenCL and Vulcan provide parallel acceleration of shaders or kernel programs compiled to Cronos' Spear V intermediate language. Sickle and OpenVX on the top row of the slide are higher-level programming frameworks for increased application portability across diverse processing architectures. Sickle provides parallel processing using standard C++ and OpenVX uses a graph abstraction to express vision and inferencing functionality and can directly import trained neural networks in the Cronos NNEF format. Sickle and OpenVX may be accelerated by the lower-level Cronos APIs, but that is a choice that's left to the implementer. Third-party libraries for imaging, vision, vision, video, and inferencing often use lower-level Cronos APIs such as OpenCL or Vulcan for direct access to hardware acceleration. So taking augmented or virtual reality as an example application, Cronos APIs actually cover all parts of the spatial computing pipeline, including camera control, vision machine learning, acceleration to understand the user and their environment, as well as generating the graphics or XR displays and providing portable control over XR devices. And as we're about to learn, the graph structure of the OpenVX standard is unique amongst the Cronos APIs in that it can be used to flow data between lower-level processing blocks. So before I hand over to Kriti, I hope that gave you some insight into the family of Cronos APIs. Cronos is committed to providing a productive and safe space for companies to cooperate on open standards that benefit their own business and the wider industry, including the embedded and safety critical markets. Your company is very welcome to join Cronos for a voice and a vote in any of these standardization activities, especially if you plan to implement a Cronos standard on your silicon or use a Cronos standard in your system or application. And with that, let me hand over to Kriti for more details. Thanks, Kriti.
All right. Thanks, Neil. Thanks for that good introduction for the Cronos family of standards. And as Neil said, oh, computer vision is increasingly relevant today. And you know, you might have heard some misconceptions here and there that it's not anymore because of, you know, machine learning. But today, computer vision is not only relevant, it's critical for the future of AI and automation. And if you see, CV is not just classical image recognition anymore. You know, there's vision transformers, there's multi-modal AI, where, you know, we merge the computer vision part with the language, enabling the AI to see and reason with images, right? So and then there's real-world applications are really exploding with the computer available. And then you can see the autonomous vehicle, medical imaging, robotics, defense. A lot of places are deploying the CV solutions out there. And Rafael will, you know, give you a deep dive into the autonomous vehicle application and how OpenVX is going to be used there. And there's always new challenges, and new challenges opens new opportunities. And there's this efficient edge AI. It's still a challenge being able to deploy these neural nets and computer vision models in the edge. And there's 3D and NERF. And then the big challenge, the video understanding, the real-time analysis, you know, of security, sports analytics, or, you know, content moderation. It still needs a lot of work. And then this is one of the market survey, that article I read from the Edge AI Vision, I have the source there. You can see, like, the computer vision market is not only growing, but it's thriving. So in the next five or six years, you can see that there's a steady growth. And CV is not just, you know, trend. It's foundational technology for AI and interact with the visual world. And as long as computer and visual data exists, you know, CV will remain critical, and it will be an important part of any AI deployment. And with that, you know, open royalty-free standard for computer vision is OpenVX right now in the market. And OpenVX is open, royalty-free, and is, you know, cross-platform accelerations available for all computer vision applications. And as Neil said, we have the high-level graph-based abstraction, so makes it portable and, you know, it's efficient vision processing. And with that, I'll hand over to Rafael to go ahead and give you a deep dive into the automotive use case and OpenVX.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Sorry, will you share my screen? So Rafael Cano is working for Bosch for the XE division, which is the cross-computing division. I will show you later what we do exactly. We are an automotive supplier, in fact. We joined Cronos two years ago to be able to, yeah, extend OpenVX with the needs we have for our own application. And this I will explain you today with what we did for our applications. So today, a short agenda. So I will show you first the automotive ecosystem. So what kind of use case we have and the technology we use for that. The automotive world is changing fast right now. There is a new business model. I will explain you that also. And based on that, I will try to give you a shot of a view why OpenVX could help us. So it means tier ones, but not only tier ones, OEM too, and for sure, system or chip vendors, huh? Then to explain that, I will dig into the OpenVX concept shortly, not in details. And also the future of OpenVX. So based on our feedback and the feedback of the user, we decided to do the OpenVX version 2.0, and this I will explain also too. So the automotive use case, we use multiple sensors in the automotive domain. So we have ultrasonics for low range. We also have radar for long range, middle range. We use also LiDAR. We use a lot of video sensors. So we have a lot of different, in fact, inputs that we have to combine. And most of the time, we do also fusion of that. And based on that, we have different also situation yeah, functionality we want to fulfill. So and we classify them in different, divide them in mannerings tag. This is everything that is related to driving or parking, in fact. So driving is for high speed, parking low speed. We do have some driver monitoring, tires camera. And also there are a lot of convenience camera, like trailer, tailgate, things like this, where you don't have the necessity to do computer vision, but you have to show that to the customer too. So and when you look at the different use case, for sure, we will have different video streams for to fulfill all these features. We have computer vision video streams because we use defined ISP settings, in fact, because we do not fulfill the same needs as the human vision, for example. And we do have also human vision because we want to show the images or the data we fuse to the driver. And you have different system-based, in fact, sometimes you have infrared sensors for the driver monitoring. So a lot of different situation, a lot of different sensors, and we need to manage that, which is also a complex use case. Besides this, we have a big business change in the automotive industry. So until now, we were working in a traditional way, so to say. We, tier one, we were designing, producing, an ECU and can be, you see it on the left side, can be a parking ECU, it can be a driving one, it can be a body computer or something like this. We are designing, we are designing that and developing that based on the OEM specification, which was only defining the interface. And the OEM was doing the full integration of all this small subsystem, and they were doing the validation. And in fact, we were delivering a black box. And now there is a transition to something that is totally different, which is called software-defined vehicle, where we have, in fact, to share a common platform. So now OEMs or tier one for a specific OEM is developing a big ECU that gathers a lot of sensors. So on that ECU, you can have, I don't know, up to 10 camera, maybe six radar sensor, 12 ultrasonic. That's why they developed and they fuse all this functionality into this big ECU. Based on that, you need to be able to integrate different PCs. So you can have a tier one that is delivering the future, I don't know, driver monitoring. The other one is giving you video perception for moving objects. And the OEM maybe has its own internet development. And to be able to do that, you need a standard or you need at least standardization of the API. So during this change, Bosch adapted also is the pillar they wants to develop, in fact. And we won't look at all the different definition here, but we can have a closer look also on the on the challenge we have to fulfill and where OpenVX can help. So we define, we don't want to be a system or chip dependent. So we want to be able to port our functionality from one associate to the other one. Because for sure, if the OEM or another tier one is doing the ECU hardware, for sure, they won't use all the time the same system or chip. So you want to be able to port your functionality quickly from one system to the other one. And we want to be able to integrate sub-party software, and we want to be easily integrated into a bigger system. And if you look at these two challenges and you refer to the OpenVX webpage, and if you are looking, and this is just a screenshot from the OpenVX description on the webpage, you will see that OpenVX can help you to do that. What is OpenVX? It's, you see here, portable across different processors, including ISP, DSP, GPUs, CPUs, and more. And this is exactly what we have with the associate we are developing on. We target low-power, real-time application. This is what we need. And embedded platform also. That's why we see here, okay, we have a need and OpenVX can fulfill that. Oh, that's the question. Okay, I explained shortly first, no system or chip locking. For us, we want to have a fast transition between the old hardware or the hardware A to hardware B based on the new OEM requirement. For OEM, for sure, you want to be able to switch faster from one associate to the another one to have a dual sourcing strategy or to have some cost savings because the associate is cheaper on the Renesas or TI or Qualcomm. And for vendor, as Neil said, he wants to be also capable to showcase what you can do based on the same hardware or software ecosystem. So that's for the system, the system and chip locking. For the customer and sub-party integration, so as I said just before, we want to ease the integration of the functionality. And for that, you need a standardized interface. He wants to be able also to deliver libs and not the code itself. And he wants to reduce complexity. So you want to have standardized way to interact between the hardware accelerators and to decrease the system complexity. And the last one, which is very important also, he wants to be able to build and capitalize over the project generation or system generation to not always redevelop the things you did on the other associate. You want to be able to build on top of your system. And all these challenges, they are fulfilled by OpenVX. So if we take, let's say, a use case we have in the automotive, but not only, in fact, if you look at medicals, I guess, or some drone development, you will have something that is very similar. So what do you have here? Let me check. We have different cameras. We can have LiDAR or radar or something else. In fact, we don't, we don't care too much. So what do you want to do? You want to grab the images, do some image preparation. He wants to control your sensor. In that case, this is a camera. He wants to pre-process maybe your hardware information. You want maybe to split, as I said before, between different type of stream. As the upper part is dedicated to human vision and the lower part is dedicated to computer vision, for example. So if you look at the human vision, maybe you need some image quality improvement, the noise, things like this. You want, maybe you want to do some visualization. And most of the scales you use GPU. He wants to stream that to a head unit. Or he wants to do RTP stream over Ethernet and do some encoding before. For the computer vision part, you can have classic computer vision stuff where you do the warping first, you do some optical flow, or maybe you do deep learning also too. And maybe he wants to do also some fusion based on some of accelerators. All this pipeline is running from the left to the right. So the information has to flow from one block to the other one. And at the end, we output, in fact, what we call business logic. This is a pure CPU algorithm when you get all the objects and maybe you do what you want. You can calculate the trajectory of your vehicle or something like this. And when you look at that situation, in fact, what you see is that you spread your data pipeline across very different and various hardware accelerators, core and subsystem too. So you see here, you can maybe control your sensor with the CPU, but you will grab the images via the MIP interface. You want maybe to do your quality improvement on a DSP. Wants to use the GPU for the visualization. He wants to dewarp on a specific engine that is built on your system and chip. So you see, you have multiple hardware accelerators, and you want to connect them. And by doing that, in fact, if you look bit closer, so each block is a compute unit, they use a different hardware accelerators. They can run on the host on a remote system. This I will explain you later, the model of OpenVX also with targets and host. He wants that all these nodes run in parallel. And for sure, when you connect, you connect nodes to each other, you have a graph at the end. And they have to run fast with the minimum interaction with your host, in fact, CPU system. So you want to let the pipeline run, just get the results. And again, if you look at OpenVX, that's exactly that. That's the same concept where you have nodes that you interconnect to each other, and then they form a graph, a graph that you can run in the background and that you can get a Q and DQ data. And at the end, when you are finished with hardware accelerator processing, you can downstream that to the application itself. So we have a model that fit one-to-one to the OpenVX concept. So if we have a closer look, and but that's really just to show you the OpenVX infrastructure. So I just took the image pipeline for the human vision, but we can be also a computer vision. As I said, you have different blocks that you connect. You and QDQ, it means you feed your graph and you get back the results. And all these blocks and graphs that we run on top of OpenVX. And I was saying just before, there is a remote and target concept in OpenVX. The idea is to offload the processing to a remote target when possible. So if you look here, you will have maybe the GPU. GPU is normally running on the POSIX OS. You have the driver, the OpenGL driver or the Vulkan driver. This is, let's say, host node. It will run on your performance score. But for some of the system and chip, you can control the low-level hardware accelerator, which can be the ISP or DSP, but any kind of hardware accelerator from a remote core. So maybe you have some R5 core, and you can offload, in fact, the image preparation or the image quality improvement on their score. And the benefit of that also, you lower the load on the host. And we know when you have a lot of camera, a lot of sensor, it's a lot of interrupt. So it can be that your host is overloaded and you will have a problem at the end. So there is a concept in OpenVX to do that on remote nodes. And also this connection, what you see between image preparation and image quality improvement, this connection can be virtual also. It won't be seen by the host and will be done directly at the subsystem level if you have a dedicated RAM, for example, or cache to put this image that will be outputted. So by doing that, so possibility also to offload things via OpenVX to reduce the system load on your own system. And by doing also the transaction here, then it will be done at that level and then the DDI bandwidth will be reduced also by doing that. So, okay, I just put you a small video to show you the, what we do, for example, for the visualization. Now, we can also on that turn, a very complex application where you render 3D things. This is a project we have in series. So it means also OpenVX is just a block. And what you feed inside this block, in fact, you do the way you want. So again, when we are looking at no system on chip locking, now what we discussed just before, this graph here, what you see, in fact, is not system or chip dependent. I want to do the same stuff if I am running on system on chip A or system on chip B. My graph, my pipeline won't change. And only the canon implementation can be different. But by doing that, you can keep a big part of your code, in fact, the part that is hosting the graph and managing the graph. By doing that, you reduce the system and chip dependency. When you decompose also the data pipeline into small nodes, we talked about just before, or to ease the integration. And in that case, this is much easier because one of the supplier can develop, for example, these nodes. He can do the validation independently from the full graph because here you just have to feed the right data and just check what is coming out. And by doing that, you can do your own validation and you don't need the full project, which is sometimes very complex. And at the end, you can deliver just a lib. A lib that will be for sure built on the same platform and that will respect the OpenVX API. And by doing that, you achieve also IP protection because you don't have to deliver the full code. It will be a black box. You just give a lib. The last was to build over system generation. So the system are getting bigger and bigger. The complexity increase a lot. We need to be able to have a solid base to be able to do that. And in the automotive, but again, not only that, it goes beyond the automotive. You have safety and security goals. You want to be portable and reuse the same codebase and documentation and quality artifacts because this is also very costly to do the full validation, the V-cycle, the unit test, the integration test, all that stuff. And if you have to do, redo that every project, this is really a loss of time. You need to be robust and reliable. So again, if you reuse the code of a project generation, for sure, your code will be better. And you need also mechanism to detect errors, recover and all that stuff. And again, we see in the automotive, the field claim is, this is only very simple stuff. The camera does not show up. We don't have data. And we see that. That's not because the algorithm does not work. It's just because the pipeline does not run, in fact. So you can have the base AI algo. If the algo does not get the data, it won't run. So you have to make that very, very stable and robust to have a good system on the market. As I said, complex, time-consuming. And again, reuse across system and chip. It's a good idea. It's a smart approach. And for that, you need an API. You need to share the same base, and OpenVX is providing you that, in fact. So what is good also, because you can tell me, okay, OpenVX seems to be very similar to Gstreamer, for example. Yes and no. Gstreamer does not have the host and target model, but also it's a very big framework. I like it. We are using this also. But again, if you want to have some kind of safety and security validation on your framework itself, because for us, when we have a safety goal, we need to ensure that the full system is also fulfilling the requirement. So your framework will have to fulfill all the safety and security requirements. And when you have a big framework, that's a bit difficult to do. That's why we said also OpenVX is light, can be lightweight. And by doing this, this is much easier to make it as ill compliant, as ill this is our safety, let's say, requirements. What is good also, you have performance tests. You can use this test to make sure that the framework react the way you want. The framework is robust. You can make sure also the coverage with the performance test is good. So you can extend that with a specific test too. And a good step also, OpenVX is offering a clear separation between what you are doing. between what you are doing in your application and what the framework is doing. So all things related to buffer allocation, memory management, buffer pools, lock mechanism to start another computation and all that stuff. This is covered by the framework itself. So then you ensure freedom of interference between your application and what the framework is doing. And you reduce also the number of error you can have in your code itself. And for the reliability, so standardized API. So you built on the stable foundation, so you can improve your code across, as I said, product generation and system or chip. And that's really something that is very, very important. Error detection and recovery, OpenVX offer different mechanisms. You can monitor graph timeout, get some node zero. You can recovery, you can check your latency, you can go in node diagnostic. So there is a lot of things in place. And if something is missing, do the same way Bosch did. Join the working group and then do your own extension. So this is also possible. Now we move to the OpenVX and cameras. So cameras is tentative to standardize the camera interface. When we talk about camera, we means all these blocks, in fact. So you need to capture something and you need to control your camera. You need to have some auto exposure. You need to have some embedded line parsing, you need to do some white balance correction. You want to adjust again and you want to use nice pitch. And again, you see you have different blocks. And if you connect blocks, there are graphs, then it fits well the OpenVX model. And I show you right now what we do for the camera, let's say, interface, where we have something similar, not exactly the same, but very similar. So we have a node which is managing the camera itself. These nodes output you a whole image. This is the image plus the embedded line. This image go to the ISP. On the ISP, we define different outputs for different needs. As I said, maybe you have computer vision, maybe you have human vision, any kind of things you need to output from the ISP itself. The ISP gives statistic back to the auto exposure, the gain control, the wide balance, it's up to you to design the way you want, in fact. You have a control loop value to your camera and to the ISP itself. So OpenVX is a nice way to design, in fact, your camera control. And again, this is something that you can reuse because all the system and chip have an ISP. But an ISP is an ISP. So maybe you will have to adapt slightly the ISP tuning parameter. But at the end, the graph remains the same. And maybe you can do something smart where you have a camera node that is compliant with different MIP interface, with different sterilizer, decilerizer, different imager. It's up to you. But with OpenVX, then you have the possibility to build that and to extend also your framework yourself. That's the link between cameras and OpenVX. Yeah. More or less. Now, talking about OpenVX roadmap and OpenVX version 2.0. So we, Bosch, we joined two years ago in the OpenVX working group. And we were giving back our experience based on that. And what we said is that the model currently of OpenVX 1.3, it's good, this is existing and we like it, no problem. But in fact, all the things here, vision nodes and speech nodes and all that stuff, we don't use, in fact. Because as you saw before in the slides, we are doing our own node. We don't use the standard Cani edge detector from OpenVX. No, no, we program directly if we have the ESP, we do it on the DSP. If we have an FPGA, we do that on FPGA, we can do that on a GPU with OpenCL. Why not? But what we want is to have the framework itself and the possibility to have a custom user node, we call it a user node. And that's saying, that being said, we, with version 2, we want to simplify also the the performance model. So previously, you had a different feature set where you say, okay, I fulfilled the base feature and I take the vision nodes and then I do a performance test with that. Or I do the text of base feature, I take the network node and I do a performance test with that. As I say, a bit complex, it's also not so easy to fulfill. Yeah, that's why now we want to simplify that with version 2.0. And the idea is following. So we take the best feature from the OpenVX 1.3. We don't change, we won't change so much. We will integrate some essential extensions that we really need. I'd give you an example, we have a pipelining extension that is really useful and that it is a must have. We have some other extension, like supplementary data and all that stuff that are really interesting for the future of the framework itself. And as I said before, we want to be able to have our custom node. So it means we, the framework, we give you just the frame, the shell, to put your own code. And this code can run on the host or can run on a remote core. And this is what we said and this is what we do on the version 2.0. We will focus on that and by doing that, also we will reduce also the the effort to be able to provide an OpenVX implementation if the system or chip vendor wants to provide it. The performance test, we focus on that also and to be a bit more agnostic. As I forgot to say also, we don't want to focus on images. As I said before, we can also transport any kind of data. Because in fact, a buffer is a buffer, this is just a place where to put some information. If the information is radar echoes or ultrasonic echoes or something else. In fact, the pipeline, the framework itself does not care. Important is to transport the data from one hardware accelerator to the other one. Yeah, that's the goal of OpenVX 2, we are still working on that. But that's to summarize, we reduce the scope of OpenVX. We focus on the core framework features and we make the framework so agnostic that you can use it for any kind of nodes you want to develop, in fact. We don't want you to use the vision nodes. If they are there, this is good, if not, you do the way you want. So and that being said, the OpenVX will look like that we have on the left side, the performance, just to fulfill the core API. And then the vendor can choose or not, it's up to you. If you want to implement one of the extensions, you can still say it makes sense to have the vision nodes because I don't know your motivation. I want to do a fast prototyping, for example, why not? It makes sense maybe. We want to focus on the neural network, why not also? Again, about AI and neural network, you can do your own container when you get the data and run some neural network based on that. You don't need something specific, in fact. The goal of OpenVX is to give you the data and give you the possibility to transfer it to somebody else. And OpenVX give you also all the mechanism to manage those pipelines. Okay, this is another image from the blog where you see we focus on the core and then you have the optional extensions, in fact. Last but the least, the, because we are reducing, in fact, the specification and all the things you need to bring an OpenVX implementation on your system and chip. And because we see all the system and chip, they share the same hardware infrastructure, to be honest. You have performance score, you have efficiency score, Acore, Aircore. You have multiple hardware accelerators, DSPs, NN engines, ISP, encoder, decoder, GPUs. All the system and chip have the same, in fact. And this is also most of the case, this is ARM, you have unified memory. And most of the application and running on the POSIX system in the automotive use case, this is Linux or this is Unix, in fact. And the idea is also to propose a portable sample implementation. And that could fit, in fact, most of the system and chip needs. In fact, the idea is to implement the OpenVX framework for Austin Remote and just reserve some connector where the vendor just plug the things, the framework need to be able to run on the system and chip. So if you look again the way the OpenVX is working, you will need to have some specific memory allocator. Because for hardware accelerators, you need a specific memory to do that. So in Linux can be a CML pool with DMABuff, Unix is something else. But at the end, this is the same, this is continuous aligned memory location, in fact. For that, you need an allocator to be able to do that. Maybe, as I said before, on the target node, there will be a dedicated RAM or cache. Maybe you need a specific allocator for that. And for sure, if you have memory locator, you need a memory pool also to maintain that. You need to feed also the memory region because you see that the framework is also sharing data between remote cores and the host cores, so you need to have some shared memory region. And to communicate between the host and the remote core, you need an interprocessor communication, which is just an interrupt. And for sure, then you need your classic abstraction layer for the operating system, for mutex, for condition wait and all that stuff. But in fact, it's everywhere the same. If your IPC is called API or something else, at the end, the framework does not care. It just have to trigger the interrupt. So the vendor could deliver its own specific causal abstraction layer, plug it to the framework. You run the performance test, if this is green, you have it. That's the next idea. To do that, open source, that would be nice, but we are not yet started, you can join if you want. And with that, I'm most finished. The Bosch experience on that, join the Kronos group because this is a way to change things, in fact. So we wanted to have some extension, we proposed that to the working group. They were accepted and then we have them. So this is not very complex. Just because you have a need, you can go there, say, we discuss about that, if it makes sense, you will get it. Again, join, it makes sense. And by doing that, we can change also the automotive ecosystem. Right now, what I see is that we are not able to build on stable foundation. We redo every time the same stuff. And this is not, this is not okay. And also for, at least if we want to have some kind of autonomous system and driving or parking, we need something that we built on a solid base, in fact, and not something that is changing everything. So, yeah, I think finished.
Great. Thank you, Raphael. Now we'll open the floor to the Q and A portion of the webinar. Raphael, if you want to stop your screen share, I appreciate that. And please feel free to submit your questions using the Q and A feature on the Zoom toolbar. And the first question I have is, given a lot of new software development in microprocessor tend to use modern C++, do you provide concepts like RAII on top of OpenVX API?
So the OpenVX is a C API as you have the Vulkan or OpenGL. So for sure, you have some C code inside your C++ code, which is not a problem. So again, your application that will run all the graphs and monitor the graphs and Q and QDQ the graph can be C++. This is not a blocking point, in fact.
Wonderful. For SOC enabling, enablement, scoping, what is reusable versus what shouldn't SOC vendor develop?
So if currently, in the current situation, if this SOC vendor give you an OpenVX implementation, at least you could reuse your graph, this is what I was explaining. And also the application which is running the graphs, the kernel, the node implementation itself can be different. If you use a different hardware accelerators, it can be very similar if you use a GPU, for example. Because most of the case, I give you this example, in the GPU, we use Vulkan and that's the same implementation. So you have always the driver which is running that. So depends on the use case, for sure. If you run on the DSP for system on chip A and you move to B and you have FPGA and then you will have to move to FPGA. But at least the nodes, the interface, the capability of the node, they will remain the same and also the graph.
Wonderful. I don't have any more questions up in queue.
I have a question, maybe a question for Kriti. So, well, thank you, Raphael, for the awesome presentation and the insight. And automotive obviously is a key use case. I'm interested, Kriti, in your role as chair, what other use cases are you seeing for OpenVX? Now, what's the top three automotive and what else is OpenVX being used for?
So I've seen a lot of medical use cases. People use OpenVX on medical imaging. And another key use case that, you know, we don't get much information is on defense. Because I spoke to a few people last year on Amber Vision Summit that they were using OpenVX and they developed their own OpenVX. And it was a South Korean company, which was working directly for the defense industry. And we've seen trends in the sense that, you know, there's people who use, because we are not, you know, like the Intel Inside logo. So you don't really know where our code is being used. So I think the, that's something we're trying to change and capture that information and provide it to our end user and say, hey, here's an OpenVX application and here's where it's being used. And that's and works with 2.0, we're trying to bring that out and help people see where OpenVX is really used.
And robotics and just general, not just autonomous cars, right? But just autonomous devices and drones and all kinds of stuff will also be using vision processing. I have a question for Raphael, this is my opportunity to ask for Raphael some questions. The, so I, when you split the camera functionality up between the different OpenVX nodes, you get an enormous amount of flexibility, which is awesome. Can you talk, and I think Bosch has had good experience doing that and other vendors, I think TI as well. Can you talk to the performance and are there performance latency issues or does it work perfectly well?
This is working, but again, it depends also what we are calling real time. So in the automotive, you are running with 30 FPS. With this kind of design, we can run up to 10 cameras without big issues. 30 FPS, if you want to extend to 60, it's maybe another challenge. But that being said, you have the model in OpenVX and you could say also because you have this remote core and you can say the auto exposure, instead of doing on the host, we locate that into the host, a remote core, and then a fuse all the functionality together to make them run faster. It's also a possibility, this is up to you, in fact. And that's what we think this is good in OpenVX. And that's why we want to bring the 2.0 with the user node. We want to give also the user the possibility to optimize the way they want. So that's be the idea. You have the virtual nodes, you know, you can still build your graph, but the node is not existing on the host, it will be on the target itself.
Right, yeah, uploading stuff from the host is definitely good, yeah, yeah, I get that. I think we have some other questions in the QA, I'll take them in order.
Yes, the first one's from Ronan. He's asking, will the open source implementation ASIL certified or certifiable?
Raphael, I think, yeah, I can answer at a high level. I mean, there also, we don't have that implementation yet, but there will be no reason in theory. Of course, safety certification is not at an API or a subsystem level, it's at the system level. So the actual safety certification would need to be done at the system level now, including that component along with all the other rest of the system components together.
What is good with, if I may, add something. What is good, you open VX, you have the performance test. And this give you already a good base to have a first validation. And then there's a performance testing, you can extend that. And you can extend the way you want to make sure your framework is robust enough. And you can extend the way you want to make sure your framework is robust enough. And also you can run some coverage tests based on that. So you are free to do that. The problem is, do you have access to the implementation? Yes or no? That's why we say it would be good to have an open source implementation. Because in that case, we can work on that, improve that and provide also the robust confirmation test that bring you to the yes, it'll be level, for example, why not? So there are some implementation currently which are almost open source that we can also maybe reuse or something. But this is just an idea, it's something I would like to do. I'm coming from the Linux ecosystem and I think in that case, open source will be, would be very nice. So we have the standard API there is good. And then if we can extend that with an open source implementation, it will be, would be awesome, would be nice.
Yeah, open source, open standards, working together, hand in hand.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Another question is to the committee, what is the cost of building OpenVX stack on accelerator infra from scratch?
So what I know from system on chip vendor, they always have some kind of framework. So and if you have a good framework, the step to be OpenVX compliant should not be very complex. Because at the end, you always do the same. You have nodes and you have graphs that you interconnect. So there is no other concept, in fact. So that's why my opinion should not be very complex, depending what you deliver.
Yeah, and the other part of that question was, are you going to get locked into a particular SOC vendor now because you're using OpenVX? I mean, also, I'm not sure. Well, one way to answer that, of course, is OpenVX is not locked to a particular SOC vendor because it is an open standard and we do have a lot of hardware vendors helping to build the standard. So you can go between SOC vendors because you're using a multi-company governed open standard that's available and hopefully shipping on the SoCs that you want to use. So you may be using OpenVX, but that doesn't tie you to a particular silicon vendor.
This is the goal, that's why we were presenting that today also. This is the only way to be portable, at least at the graph level. If you consider the game development, so they are using OpenGL or Vulkan and then you are portable across the GPU. And that's the same idea also with OpenVX. For sure, you need to have an OpenVX implementation. And when you have it, then you can reuse a big portion of your code, in fact.
Excellent. And Ronan's asked, why not provide a reference implementation?
We do provide a sample implementation right now. And the working group is actually planning on how we could, you know, have a reference implementation that works across, at least with a framework and the memory management across all hardware so that everybody can just take that reference and use it. That's still in work, so we'll give you more updates once we have more clarity on it.
Perhaps as the clarified terminology, this is a bit, it's a bit geeky, but it's important. The, you know, what's the difference between a sample implementation and a reference implementation? To most people, that is, they can be the same thing. You know, it's an open source implementation that's been created by the working group and then hopefully getting more community involvement. It's an open source, it's available to everyone. We typically use the term sample implementation if it's an implementation of an open standard. Because in standard community, if you say a reference implementation, it means that that implementation is taking precedence over the conformance tests of the API specification itself. In other words, if the, if there's a reference implementation that is not passing the conformance test, it's a reference implementation that is correct, not the conformance test. And that's not normally what you want. If you do, if you're building an open standard implementation, an open source implementation of an open standard, you want to have a really robust conformance implementation. But if there's a bug in it, you don't want it to preempt your specification and conformance test suite. But like I say, it's pretty geeky, but it's important. But it's basically just an open source implementation that everyone can use. And I think it is important, we should do it.
What is, coming from Stephanie, what is the articulation between OpenVX and SQL?
I think they're quite different, that they're both higher level. They deliberately don't go down into the explicit control over how operations are going to happen, like lower level APIs like OpenCL and Vulcan. But I think they, they have different design perspectives. As Raphael has very eloquently described, OpenVX is primarily a graph for connecting functionality nodes and blocks together. Whereas the design perspective for SQL is to take ISO standard C++ a large program application and to automatically offload the computationally intensive parts of that application down onto offload acceleration hardware. Now, SQL is working on graph functionality, but I think it's not, it's more of a C++ perspective and OpenVX perhaps has a more hardware implementation perspective.
So building on that, does OpenVX interoperate with other Kronos standards?
I mean, we do, we have, you know, the NNEF import capability where you can import the whole neural net into an OpenVX graph. We have the OpenCL interrupt where you can, or you can implement whole OpenVX in OpenCL. And we also, I mean, you can also write the underneath kernels in SQL, right? So we kind of interoperate with each other. We've also looked at how we could, you know, have some Vulcan interface to do some compute part.
My example, that's just what we want to aim with version 2.0 is that you have the user node. It's a container where you can run what you want. And I was showing the human vision path where you showed the surround view application with the vehicle. In fact, here we are using OpenVX to deliver and output the images from, and in this node, we just built our application which is running the GPU and is running OpenGL and with different stuff. So in fact, this is just a container. Inside this container, you can put the things you want. If you want to run OpenCL code, you can run OpenCL code. If you want to run C++, you run C++. If you want, I don't know, C code, every kind of stuff. This is just a way to transfer data in the fast and efficient way between the hardware accelerators.
Excellent. And then one more last question. How does OpenVX graph API compare with the CU DNN, DNN graph API, which allows plugins with different backends? Also, it would be nice if OpenVX interacted with other frameworks like IRE, TVM, etc.
Yeah, that's good, KuDNN, that's the CUDA neural network. Do you want to talk about that, Kriti? Do you have a comparison between the two?
Yeah, so for example, we do, are working actually with the NNEF part where we want to output, you know, the TVM outputs for the neural net extension part. And then we are also working on an extension where we can directly run a TVM as a node. You know, where we understand the TVM inputs and outputs and we can just plug in into the framework and be agnostic to what the neural net does, but just as a black box. And let the TVM or the vendor, you know, run the show, for example, on the hardware. And then, because you know, neural net is really hard to standardize, right? We tried that with an extension, but it's a fast-moving field and it's not good to standardize something which is moving so fast. And we want to be compatible and be able to run these neural nets inside the OpenVX graph. And that's what we're doing. We're doing the NNEF import. Now, NNEF is also working on, you know, outputting TVM so that you can plug and play that into the OpenVX as a TVM node. And TI also has an extension which is called a TVM extension. And we're trying to bring it into the Kronos extension. And how it compares to CU DNN, I'm letting Neil answer that part.
But I was actually going to focus in, I mean, the two frameworks that were mentioned, TVM and IRE, I mean, they're both compilers. Right, so and you know, they are used for compiling neural networks. So as Raphael was saying, it doesn't really matter what tool chain you use to generate an OpenVX node. You can get whatever functionality you want, you can put that into an OpenVX graph. I think it is, and now OpenVX 2 is headed in a direction with more emphasis on the graph flow. The, I think it is going to be an interesting area of cooperation between OpenVX and the other Kronos APIs is to streamline how you can take the other Kronos APIs, probably the low-level ones, with SQL 2 and code whatever you want, like, you know, you can, TVM has an OpenCL backend, for example. Grab a compiled framework accelerated on OpenCL and plug that into an OpenVX graph. And I think there is opportunity to streamline that. So you really do get the best of both worlds. You can get that low-level control and for cameras too, when we have that. If you want the low-level explicit control, you can do that. You can do it within the context of an OpenVX node and then you can have the larger OpenVX square.
Excellent. Well, we've ran out of time. Thank you to all our speakers today for this wonderful webinar. We truly appreciate your time and effort and thank you for joining us today. Have a great day.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you. Bye bye.